Thank you and welcome again to the Mesa City Council Meeting for April the 3rd. All of our council are present. We will begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Cindy Carpenter with the Cherist Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you all for all of your hard work that you do every single week. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, I ask that you give to our mayor and our council members a spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of you, God, that they would know what is the hope of their calling, that they would make wise decisions, that they would always look to you for guidance by the Holy Spirit. And we thank you that they will come to know you in a deeper way. Thank you that Mesa becomes a very prosperous city, that we always have all sufficiency for all things. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you Pastor for being here. We appreciate that. Good start to our meeting. On our agenda tonight, we will begin with a, under our awards and recognitions, we do have one proclamation that we'd like to take care of. I'm proud to proclaim April of 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Mesa, Arizona. This month recognizes the passing of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to further housing choices for all Americans. Here to accept the proclamation and tell us more about fair housing is City of Mesa Community Services Deputy Director Mary Branton. Mary, we'll come down and give you this proclamation and take a photo with you, but feel free to share any thoughts you have about housing in the city and fair housing specifically.
We didn't know we were going to make a presentation bet. We are excited to proclaim April as the Fair Housing Month for the City of Mesa, and we always strive to make sure that all of our residents have housing that is safe and that they're not being discriminated against for any reason for their housing.
I'll just add that that includes all of our programs and services for any of the agencies we fund or any access to the services here in the City of Mesa. Because we receive federal funding, we do make a commitment to enforce fair housing and to make sure that there's opportunities for everybody. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That was Michelle Albanese and Mary Branton. These ladies, during COVID, if you don't mind, I'll piggyback a little bit. The City of Mesa did a wonderful job of, our housing department in particular, in working with eviction prevention and utility payment assistance, dispersing, I'm going to say $65 million? Sixty, $60 million over the course of, you know, less than two years. And that was, that's a lot of work. And so these ladies and those who work with them have done an excellent job of helping a lot of Mesa families with housing, and we continue to be very committed to that. So they're well deserving of our respect and thanks. So council, let's go down and take a photo with this proclamation and celebrate National Fair Housing Month. Pretty spaced out. There we go. Do we all fit in the frame? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Find a good place for that. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We'll invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda. Mr. Christopher, I'll let you know that we have received cards to speak on Agenda Item 8B, so that will be removed from the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items from the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for College Bound, one day event, April 29th at Riverview Park, 2202 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for College Bound, one day event, April 30th at Riverview Park, 2202 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Arizona Aviation Historical Group, one day event, April 29th at 4426 East Fighter Aces Drive. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Orito's Mexican Food, 1033 North Dobson Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Sky High Dobson, 1941 West Guadalupe Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Level 1 Arcade Bar, 48 West Main Street. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Mod Pizza, 5021 South Power Road. Item 4A, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for replacement bomb suit and helmet for the Mesa Police Department. The initial purchase is grant funded by Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item 4B, approving dollar limit increase and additional vendor awards to the cooperative use term contract for communications cabling systems for various city departments, as requested by the police department and the Department of Innovation and Technology. Item 4C, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for vehicle decals and graphics for the Mesa Fire and Medical, Mesa Police and various city departments, as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 4D, approving one-year term contract with a one-year renewal option for parts and repair services for fire apparatus for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4E, approving one-year term contract for playground equipment repair and replacement parts for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4F, approving use of a cooperative contract for the purchase of furniture for various locations for the Library Services Department. Item 4G, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for herbicide application and vegetation removal services for the Transportation Department. Item 4H, approving purchase to repair the primary entry monument to the Fiesta District of the Transportation Department. Item 5A, approving resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, memorandum of understanding, with Maricopa Association of Governments and various Arizona cities, towns, tribal governments and political subdivisions regarding the engagement of a full-time urban water ambassador in connection with the Rio Reimagined Urban Waters Federal Partnership and river revitalization for the Rio Salado River. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance for annexation case 22-123 regarding a portion of county right-of-way generally located on Power Road between Baseline Road and an area south of Guadalupe Road. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 22-714 for property located south of Baseline Road on the east side of Hawes Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for multiple residents' development. Items 7A, 7B and 7C are for continuance to the May 1st, 2023 City Council Meeting. These items are for an annexation, zoning ordinance and development agreement for the proposed development Legacy Gateway Hotels located along Williams Field Road west of State Route 24. Again, these items are for continuance to the May 1st, 2023 City Council Meeting. Item 8A, approving ordinance regarding zoning case 22-1263 for property generally located east of Greenfield Road and south of US 60. Rezone to the planned area development overlay and site plan review to provide housing accommodations for patients and their families at Banner Gateway Medical Center. Item 8B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 9A, approving subdivision plat for Project 4 on property generally located east of Sausman Road on the north side of University Drive. Item 9B, approving our subdivision plat for Adobe Luxury Villas Condominium on property generally located south of Brown Road on the west side of Ricker Road. And item 9C, approving subdivision plat for Villas at McDowell on property generally located west of Power Road on the north side of McDowell Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mosley, have we received, other than the 8B cards I mentioned earlier, any other requests to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
No requests, ma'am.
All right, thank you. We have a motion made by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Spillsberry for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote. Thank you. The vote is unanimous in favor of adopting the consent agenda. Next item on our agenda is Item 8B. This is to take action on an ordinance that would amend the Mesa City Code to revise the formal procurement and council improvement threshold and update and modernize the language. We do have two requests to speak on this item. We'll hear first from Mr. Peter Enelb. I hope you'll correct my pronunciation of your name, Peter. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor and City Council. Agenda Item 8B increases the threshold for the City Council approval for procurement expenditures from $25,000 to $100,000. I believe expanding the city manager's spending authority to $100,000 without City Council approval weakens the City Council's ability to exercise prudent fiscal oversight of government expenditures. Therefore, I strongly oppose Agenda Item 8B and request that the mayor and City Council vote nigh on Item 8B. Since 2011, the City Council has overspent governmental activity revenues by $947 million and transferred from the business-type utility funds over $1.2 billion to offset governmental activity overspending. The current year budget for general governmental projects revenues of $452 million and expenditures of $591 million, for a deficit of $139 million in expenditures over revenues. The budget reflects a transfer of $120.1 million from the utility fund and $14.8 million transferred from other funds to offset the deficit. The City of Mesa's 2022 net position statement shows that Mesa has the highest level of debt compared with Phoenix, Tucson, Chandler, Gilbert and Tempe. Mesa's 2022 change in net position statement reflects that Mesa overspent general governmental activity revenues by $55 million. None of these other cities overspent their general governmental activity revenues. Instead, they all reported surpluses. The City of Mesa transferred $115 million from utility funds to the general governmental activity funds to cover its overspending. Due to the city's overspending, I fail to understand why the City Council is considering increasing the city manager's spending authority when it seems to me that the city needs to improve fiscal oversight. And to give an unelected official carte blanche on this, I think it's not prudent oversight for the City Council. You need to keep control of the finances. You're not doing a good job as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we'll hear from David Win Stanley. Welcome, David. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is David Win Stanley. I live on Topaz Avenue, just south of Ray Road near Eastmark in Councilman Summers District. I come to speak on this. You have been mandated by Proposition 477 to make this change, so it seems appropriate. Your presentation has some good examples from other cities of what they have done for the level. However, I have three suggestions for you. The first one is to examine Paragraph 1-21-8, Paragraph C. There's a disconnect between what's called large dollar amounts and the amount mentioned in that paragraph. This is under emergency care, emergency spending, and I think there's a disconnect in the wording. I'll leave that up to you and your lawyers to decide. The second thing is, I'd like to suggest that you consider lowering the amount. Why is that? According to ZipRecruiter, the average salary in Mesa is $45,000. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, the average household income in Mesa is $65,000. According to the Arizona Republic, Mr. Giles, your salary is $73,500. And yet, we're giving the city manager authority to spend more than those amounts anytime, as often as he wishes, without restriction. So my second suggestion is to ask you to consider doing it more gradually. You have the authority to make that change. You can do $50,000 this year and $100,000 next year. The third thing I'm suggesting is there's no oversight in the ordinance. There's no limit to the number of times it can be done. There's no limit to the amount. There's no reference to it cannot exceed a budget. There seems to be a slight lack of oversight of that. And so my request and suggestion is you should add that to that ordinance of, for a year, do a trial and look at what you need to be watching in the future. I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Win Stanley, can you give us the citation to the section that you thought might have a wording problem?
It is 1 dash, is it 12 or 21? I'm doing it from memory, -8. It's the emergency section, Paragraph C. It says, "Any large dollar amount," and that proceeds to talk about $25,000. And so I think there's a disconnect in the wording there.
Okay, thank you. I think Mr. Smith has it in front of him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Win Stanley.
Yes.
Counsel, any discussion on this item? While you're thinking, Mr. Brady, there was some terminology that was used by our first speaker. Can you, can the City of Mesa, is it legally possible for us to overspend and engage in deficit spending?
It is not, Mayor. By state law, we must have a balanced budget. And then the reference to filling the gap with utility transfers, the city's been doing that for 80 years. It's not the city, it's not the city manager. It's since 1943-42 that the city has always transferred funds from its enterprise fund in lieu of a primary property tax. That's the trade-off in Mesa. So it is both, the transfer is both an, is created by ordinance. It's a formula, and it's established by the council that we've been living by for many years. So it's, we don't use it to fill a gap. We don't look at it as a way to fill a deficit. It's just a part of the programming, has been since 1942. That's why the City of Mesa has not had a primary property tax during that period of time.
All right, thank you. And the comment was also made that other cities are running at a surplus. Is that the case?
Yeah, I think what's, we're actually pleased to tell everyone, if, when you read, when you go and look at an audit and a table on the sheet, the way I've been trained to do this, and I've been in this for almost 40 years, is you go down the column and all the way to the right, and then we're pleased to say, in total government, in 2022, the most recent audited statement of the city, the net position ending is $1,519,210,000, the best it's ever been since 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do you have a reaction to the question about the language?
I do, Mayor. Mayor and council, so the section we cited, 121-8C, the reference to $25,000 has been struck out. So if you, if you look at the language, it's, I'm looking at the item that's off of Legistar and the one that you had signed if it were to pass tonight, and the reference to, that exceeds $25,000, and then the numerical version of $25,000, all of that is struck out.
So because this is revising previous language, the document shows the old language, and it shows a line through it.
Right.
So that may have created some confusion.
It was not that way on the version that was online.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, then that's, that's a problem, that the version online didn't reflect that, that that was, that language had been crossed through.
So Mayor, sometimes people's phones, when you try to look at on your phone, your software doesn't show, unless you've downloaded the Word format, sometimes it won't show. It is in, this is a print-off.
I don't doubt what you're saying. I think there's-
This is a print-off of the Legistar item, so if you have the software and you, if you look at it, it is struck out.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments? Okay, let's go with Mr. Freeman and then Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out, when we transfer the monies from our enterprise fund, it's strictly for our public safety budget. So we did an ordinance change, I think about a year and a half ago, two years ago. Is that right, Mr. Brady? Was it a resolution?
No, it's an ordinance, but it's 25 and 5. 25% does go to public safety, 5% to-
So part of that money goes towards our public safety funding and budget.
Mr. Summers.
I had to find the mic on this one. So you mentioned that there was an audit, Mr. Brady, I'm sorry. Who does the audit? Are we referring to the ACFR?
Yes, sir. I think, I was referring to the question the mayor had, yes. I was referring to the most recently audited financial statements by our outside auditors, third party.
And that is reported in the, what's now called the ACFR?
Correct, correct, yes, on page eight.
We'll have a presentation on that. I think we had one.
We had a presentation. I encourage the public to go look at that. It shows our net positions since 2018, I think is how far we went back, and we are over $1 billion, the highest we've ever been.
Okay. So here's, here's the issue I've had with this before, and we, and in a study session, I've mentioned this, and it goes to Mr. Win Stanley's concerns on how much we're raising this. I believe it was in 1978, we set, the City Council had set $10,000 as the limit back then, and then adjusted it again in 2003. So the CPI from 1978 to roughly 2003 would have put this at $29,300, and the council set it to $25,000. It kind of goes to your point, Mr. Brady, that you made on that day, that the council really set it too low, and I would agree with that. We probably did set, they did set that too low. It should have been more along the line of $30,000 for, to meet the CPI. So if you look at what that $30,000 would be today in the CPI, and I'm using the SBI's calculator on this, so that is my source, that would put us a little over $48,000, $48,700. So if we, looking at the other cities, they're setting this at $100,000, but if we were to be a little bit more fiscally prudent, I think $75,000 would, one, increase the level that would, understanding that things are getting more expensive. We want to be more efficient in, and $25,000 just isn't efficient in moving things quickly and getting projects done. But I think $75,000 would be an agreeable level for one, rather than the $100,000. And like Mr. Win Stanley said, we can look at this again next year and decide if $100,000 is a better number. The other thing I think would be important, and this just goes back to when I was on council before, we raised the contracts for professional services. We raised that level as well to, up to $25,000, which I think it stays today, still about that number. But in agreement with that council, to have that number set and to make sure that council was fully informed of what the spending was, we had a quarterly report submitted to council on that spending. So there are a couple of options here. We could set it at $100,000 and require quarterly reports. We could set it at $75,000 and look at it again next year. But my preference would be to maybe even have both, where we get quarterly reports on what that spending is to council and set the rate at $75,000 for this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsberry.
Yeah, so last Thursday at our study session, I don't know if you were able to watch, we kind of went over like a really broad overhead budget discussion, and I learned a lot from it. And I felt like our constituents would benefit from being able to click on our website and to see more summary, general picture of, and explanation of how the budget works in the city, just because I think a lot of people are confused and don't quite understand. It's extremely complicated. I, my understanding is that this, changing this to $100,000 and giving more leeway would actually make things move a lot faster. And if anyone who's worked in government knows that nothing moves fast, right? Like, I've been doing this for a little over two years, and it's frustrating that, just how long some things take. And so I loved the thought that this could move things faster. I also loved the point that I believe Councilmember Duff made, is that this also would allow us to use local businesses easier and through that procurement process. I think when you look at the list of cities, and you look at their budgets, and you realize their population, and that Mesa is almost twice the size of all the other cities on here besides Phoenix, and that almost all of them are at $100,000. I totally support the $100,000. If I've learned anything the last couple of years is how many checks and balances there are on all of this, all these processes. There's tons of transparency. There's no way people are going to hide things or do anything that, that five, 10, 15 other people see. And so I trust that $100,000 is where we need to be, the size of our city, the ease of moving some of these processes through faster. I have complete confidence that $100,000 is a good solution.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsberry. Ms. Duff.
I'll chime in as well. I do want to add a couple of comments, especially as far as this expenditure limit. The expenditures are still within our budget, so it's not like a free open check that you can just write anytime. It still has to be within the confines of a budget that we set at council. So it's just the ability to spend some of these smaller amounts within that budget without the council approval. So it's not an open check. Also, on some of our funds, it may appear to have a deficit, but we have reserves, and we have a goal of what our reserves should be, bottom line. And so sometimes, especially in our utilities, instead of raising our rates to the point of covering our costs, we have had built up some reserves, and we wanted to spend down the reserves in order to maintain the reserve goal. So if you see, but overall, as a city, no, we are not running as a deficit. In individual fund, you might see some nuances of that. I agree with Councilmember Spillsberry on efficiency. There are supplies and products that our departments need, and for them to write the proposal, to have it posted with City Council, for it to get to that meeting, it can be a 60-day delay, and we already know the delays in supply chains now. So it's a matter of just being efficient, being able to get the supplies, the products that they need quicker in these small expenditures, in order to be, provide the customer service that we aspire to provide to our residents, I think is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council discussion? Ms. Go for it.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Summers on his calculation over the years, taking into account CPI and where it should end, but I, but also taking into account the total of our budget, the comparison cities. I think the, a good compromise from, going from the 25 to 100 within this year, both of the suggested, his suggestions, I think are good, middle-of-the-road first steps. I would tend to lean towards, you know, maybe approving the 100, but being given a quarterly report on what's happening. So that, because as we've said, this is the ultimate responsibility of the council to ensure our dollars are spent well. Not that we don't trust the staff and our city for sure, but that, that is part of the council's responsibility, and I think looking at it quarterly is, is a prudent thing to take on as a council, not necessarily burdening the process, because we understand that it's, it's about efficiency as well, but that we do have some oversight.
Mayor, can I just offer clarification? The original charter of 1967 set the threshold at $10,000. According to our CPI inflation calculator, $10,000 in January of 1967 is now $91,440.73. So frankly, we didn't go there. We were trying to be like our peers, because our peers have had the $100,000 for quite some time, and they move much faster in purchasing things. But even if you look at the CPI, we're over $90,000 in the 1967 $10,000. And using the CPI inflation calculator that we use, we got the $90,000.
Thank you.
But yours, but in 1970, what did you say? 1978 was set again?
I said 78 because that was in the report.
It got set three times. I'm just saying what the number was in 1967 when the charter, because all those were, I mean, I'm not even going to try to defend 2004, 25,000. We were already behind the other cities. All we're saying is, we just want to be like our peers. We want to build a purchase and move quickly, just like our peers do at $100,000. That's where we got the number. We didn't use an inflation factor. We used a comparative of other cities. We backed into and looked at, let's go back to the way it was originally set by the charter, $10,000, 1967. That's $91,000 today.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
So I would be comfortable with that number if it came with the caveat, like we did previously, I mentioned, having a quarterly report returned to council, so we can look at it. One thing that we do have to make sure we have accountability is we have a city auditor that works independently for this council, not for city management, that we hire. So if we got quarterly reports at the $100,000 and we were uncomfortable with it, we could forward it to the city auditor for review. So I would be comfortable with that.
Thank you. That was one of the points I wanted to make too, is that it was, another addition to the city charter was the, and it was not that many years ago, was the addition of a city auditor position that reports to the council. How long ago was it?
18 years.
18 years ago.
18 years ago.
2006, everybody.
Yeah. And so the allegation or the concern that there might be less scrutiny being applied to the financial workings of the city, I don't share that concern. And number, there are state procurement laws, there are city policies, we have this city auditor, and as has been indicated, this doesn't give any additional budgetary authority or discretion to the city manager. It really is just a, trying to figure out how we can move a little quicker, because waiting, you know, sometimes there's, getting on this agenda is, in and of itself, is something that's very cumbersome. And then sometimes that agenda gets continued for a week or a month, and so it can be frustrating to be a city employee and have to wait for that process to work its way through in order to do your job. So, and again, I would also remind everyone that this was something that our voters did in the last general election. I'm amending our city charter to allow for this. So I'm in support of the motion, and I do, Mr. Brady, note that a couple of our council members have asked for a quarterly report on how this is operating.
Yeah, I think we'll have to get some clarification at some point about that. I don't know if that's part of the motion here, because is it the question of, we want a quarterly report of everything under $100,000 or between 75 and 100? I mean, because that's a very long list.
What about the 25 to 100? Because that's what we're being asked to raise it from, 25 to 100?
Again, that'll be a long list if you want to see that. I would suggest if we were comfortable getting to 50 or 75, if it was between 75 and 100.
I think, I think I was told it's about 50-some items. Is that right?
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
57 items.
From which, for?
From, between 50 and $100,000.
Okay. I was going to say, anything from under 100 is probably going to be more than that. So between 50 and 100?
Mayor, councilmember, I believe it's 99 up to $100,000. So it's the zero to $100,000 total. I'm sorry, the, 50 to 100 was like 57 items. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's manageable, I think. If, if we could make that part of the motion, I'd be...
Well, making it part of the motion might require us to renotice.
If you want to just give us direction.
Yeah. If I could clarify that? The current reporting requirement for the professional services is in management policy, which is issued by the city manager. He received direction from the council, put it in management policy, so...
It's not contracting as professional services.
Yes. So, you know, that is one option for the council. If the council gives the city manager direction, that's the way we would go on the reporting. So it's not to delay the consideration of the amendment.
Okay, well, I'll note that a motion has been made and seconded for the agenda item that has published.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and vote on that, and I think we have had, the city manager has heard our suggestion that we get an update on perhaps a quarterly basis of the difference...
Between 50 and 100, I can do that.
Any additional discussion prior to we vote, prior to voting? All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. That vote passes 6-1 with Councilmember Summers voting no. Next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak under this item?
I have received no requests, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda. Is a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.